Good evening. Welcome to the December 16, 2021 meeting of the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners. If you would stand with us, please. Commissioner Trey Gooch will lead us in our prayer and our pledge. Trey.
We remember that to worship, to celebrate, and to honor the birth of our Lord Jesus Christ, whom we move and have all of our being. Father, tonight we will honor the Central Magnet High School cross-country team, the work that they have done. Father, we ask that you love them and guide them in the pathway of righteousness. And may they know that wherever they end up in life, they will represent Rutherford County. And Father, we would like to dedicate this prayer tonight to the family and loved ones and friends of Mrs. Alice Rudd. For those of us who knew her, knew her to be a kind and gentle Southern lady who loved her children, who loved her family. And Father, we know as the last few weeks, Mrs. Rudd was ready to go home. And for that, we thank you for taking care of her during the transition. In Jesus's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Three white stars on the field of blue. God keep them strong and ever true. It is with pride and love that we salute the flag of Tennessee.
Thank you. You may be seated. For those of you that are wondering, I'm not Mayor Kethrin. My name is Jeff Phillips. Mayor Kethrin is traveling with the MTSU Blue Raiders in the Bahamas to attend the Bahamas Bowl. And it's probably a really good idea that we wish him and the Blue Raiders well as they enjoy their week in the Bahamas. So you'll have to put up with me tonight. And I guess you're wondering why I have a red vest on. My wife dresses me. And she said it to honor the Christmas season, so that's our attempt at wishing everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. We'll do that probably several times before the end of the night. If you would, call to roll, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner David Gammon.
Present.
Commissioner Piercey. Commissioner Rather.
Here.
Commissioner P.
Here.
Commissioner Cook.
Here.
Commissioner Buchanan.
Here.
Commissioner Kush.
Present.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Gurley.
Here.
Commissioner Blair.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Stevens.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Virgil Gammon.
Here.
Commissioner Harris.
Here.
Commissioner Dodd.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
Here.
Commissioner McAdoo.
Here.
Commissioner Key.
Here.
Commissioner Gooch.
Here.
Commissioner Sereno.
Here.
We have a quorum, 21 present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This time, we need to read and approve our amendments for our November the 10 meeting, and I'll call on our steering chair, Craig Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have reviewed the minutes, and I find them in order except for pages 1326, 1345, and 1351. Commissioner Johnson is recorded as a no vote, but he voted yes. And I so move.
Second motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve our November, November the 10 meeting with those adjustments. Anybody have anything else? All those in favor of the motion to approve the minutes for our November the 10 meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. This time, we have a resolution of recognition for the 2021 Central Magnet High School cross-country team. I want to call on the District 16 Commissioner Phil Dodd.
Y'all can go this way, too, if you want. This is a great turnout. So as Commissioner Phillips said, this is the Central Magnet School cross-country team. The boys and the girls both won the state championships this fall, and I have the honor of recognizing them. Before I start, I do want to acknowledge Coach Allen Nichols. Allen, I want to personally thank you for the positive impact you've had on young people for many years, and specifically, the positive impact you've had on my sons. Thank you. You've been a great influence for young people. And to the athletes up here, this may seem kind of odd to do this, or it's all formal, but if we read this into the minutes, and I make a resolution, and we vote on it, and everyone here approves and signs this resolution, it goes into the state archives and the state history. So your names are going to be in the archives of the state history of Tennessee and Rutherford County, so perhaps your kids or grandkids or some future generations might choose to Google you, and you'll come up in the State House. So congratulations. I will read the resolution. Resolution of recognition, 2021 Central Magnet High School cross-country girls and boys teams, T double S double A, A double A state championship. Whereas the 2021 Central Magnet School cross-country girls and boys teams captured the T double S double A, single A double A state championship on November 5, 2021, with an average time of 19 minutes 51 seconds for the girls and 17 minutes 1 second for the boys. And whereas, the girls' team members are Ella Anderson, Emily Bush, Kylie Bush, Emma Kate Hamby, Michaela Morell, Samantha Willett, Taylor Walker, and alternates are Anna Nedzelski, Odessa Shaba. And whereas, the boys' team members are Ben Clements, Logan Kelly, Henry Nance, Tony Peck, Vinnie Peck, Eden Pingator, Pingator, excuse me, Blake Younger, and alternates are Ty Brown and Ian Callender. Whereas this has been an exciting and successful season, a special commendation is due to Coach Allen Nichols, Assistant Coach Jay Wyndham, Assistant Coach Amy Willett, Assistant Coach Chris McGill, Principal John Ash, and Athletic Director Mark Kirksey for their dedication and commitment, which made these championships possible, and for bringing this fine publicity to our community, and by their good sportsmanship and inspired team play. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that we extend this resolution of recognition to the 2021 Central Magnet School cross-country girls team and the 2021 Central Magnet cross-country boys team. Coach Nichols, Assistant Coach Wyndham, Coach Willett, Assistant Coach McGill, Principal Ash, and Athletic Director Kirksey for their successful year. Resolve this 16th day of December 2021. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
We have a motion and a second. P. All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries.
Would like to thank everybody, especially Commissioner Dodd. The only thing I would like to add, Ms. Willett and Ms. Hamby were 1-2 in the state. So Ms. Willett was an individual state champion, and she is going to run at Ole Miss, and Ms. Hamby's going to run at UT. So they were 1-2. So we were very proud of that as well. Thank you.
And the official resolution. Item G, resolution of sympathy for Alice Rudd. Call on District 13 Commissioner Paul Johnson.
Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Rudd, would you please come forward?
I have had the privilege of knowing Phil, Tim, and his mom for a long time. They've been friends of mine, and my supporters, and my constituents. And Trey goes back a little bit longer with him than I do. So Trey, I mean, it's an honor for me to even present this. No, I want you to read this.
I didn't bring my glasses.
You didn't? Okay. Well, y'all bear with me. Whereas, it was with great sadness that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners learned of the death of Alice Wanita Rudd. And whereas, Alice Wanita Rudd was born on December 16, 1929, and passed from this world on November 29, 2021, at the age of 91. She is survived by sons Tim Rudd and Mike Rudd and his wife Sue Jeanette Rudd. She is survived by grandchildren Brent Rudd and his wife Shawna Rudd, Addison Rudd, and Trace Rudd, sisters Mary Carvetti, Ruby Franz, and Betty Larison. She was preceded in death by her parents, Charlton Albert, Alberta Hudson Rudd, brothers Lawson Rudd, J.C. Rudd, Louis Rudd, and sisters Anne Rudd, Thelma Robbins, and Mildred Burns. And whereas, Wanita was born and raised in the farm community of Mimosa in Lincoln County. She raised her two children as a single mother and worked as a waitress and seamstress. Among her sewing clients were the country musicians and their band members. She and her children moved from Nashville to Murfreesboro in 1968. She and her youngest son would move to Smyrna in 1973, where she resided until 1998, when she moved into her son Tim's home in Murfreesboro. And whereas, her interests included profound love of gardening and spending time outdoors, she had a lifelong obsession with growing African violets and Irish flowers. Other hobbies included cooking, word games, sewing, and crocheting. And whereas Wanita loved politics in her community, she was a longtime supporter of St. Jude Children's Hospital and had an interest in local and national politics that would influence her entire family. And whereas, she volunteered in countless political campaigns in the Republican Party for over 40 years. She was a longtime member of the Federation of Republican Women. Her eldest son, Mike, campaigned for Barry Goldwater in high school in 1964. That tradition of activism continued with her youngest son, Tim. It gave her great joy and pride when her son, Tim Rudd, was elected Republican State Executive Committee for 18 years, and then as the 34th District State Representative in 2016. And whereas Wanita was a friendly and humble woman that always displayed a smile and quite resolved, she was a woman of deep faith and appreciation of the Lord. Wanita was baptized and proudly called Alan Jackson of Wood World Outreach Church as her pastor. When health did not permit her to attend church, it gave her great joy to watch Pastor Jackson's televised service. And now therefore be it resolved that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, at its regular session on the 16th day of December 2021, does hereby extend censor, sympathy to the family of Alice Wanita, Juanita, Wanita Rudd, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution of sympathy be forwarded to the family of Alice Wanita Rudd by the clerk of this legislative body. I so move, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We have a motion and several seconds. All those in favor of the motion to approve the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposition? Motion to approve carries.
Thank you so much. Yes, sir. Tim?
You go. All right.
Representative Rudd and all the Rudd family, we offer you our deepest sympathy and congratulate you on an outstanding life lived by your mom. Item H, we have no public comments. Item I, elections and confirmations. We'll call on the steering vice chair, Pettis Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, item one, the listings of notaries may be found on your iPad there, and you have also received those earlier through SharePoint. Mr. Chairman, I move to confirm the election of these individuals as Rutherford County notaries.
We have a motion and a second to confirm the election of notaries. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to elect carries.
Item two, steering would like to confirm Paul Cripps to be the Public Building Authority, PBA term to expire January 2026. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to confirm Paul Cripps to the PBA. All those in favor of the motion to confirm, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to confirm carries. Thank you.
Item three, steering would like to confirm Joe Gurley, County Commissioner, Chantel Sorino, County Commissioner, and Larry Jernigan, farmer, to the Agricultural Advisory Board. Terms expire December 2023. I so move.
We have a motion and a second to confirm Joe Gurley, Chantel Sorino, Larry Jernigan to the Agricultural Advisory Board. All those in favor of that motion to confirm, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to confirm carries. Thank you.
Item four, steering wishes to confirm Francis Mosby, Bob Asbury, to the Correctional Works Center Board, a two-year term to begin January 1. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
We have a motion and a second to confirm Francis Mosby and Bob Asbury to the Correctional Works Center Board. All those in favor of that motion to confirm, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? Motion to confirm carries. Thank you.
Item five, steering would like to confirm the appointment of Bishop Wagner to the Central Tennessee Regional Solid Waste Board. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to confirm Bishop Wagner to the Central Tennessee Regional Solid Waste Board. All those in favor of that motion to confirm, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? And motion to confirm carries. Thank you.
Item six, Mr. Chairman, we wish to confirm Kay Jernigan to the CCRC Board. Term to expire December 2024. I so move.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to confirm Kay Jernigan to the CCR Board. All those in favor of that motion to confirm, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? Motion to confirm carries. Thank you.
Item seven, we wish to confirm Haskell B. Smith III, Trey, to fill John L. Beatty's vacancy on the Consolidated Utility Board or the CUD as director. I so move.
We have a motion and a second to confirm Haskell Smith to the CUD Board. All those in favor of that motion to confirm, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? Motion to confirm carries. Thank you.
Item eight, I wish to announce one farm woman vacancy to the Agricultural Advisory Board. Term to expire December 2023. Mr. Chairman, this concludes this business of elections and confirmations.
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Reed. Item J, we have a resolution to approve our consent agenda. I'll call on our Budget Chair, Robert P.
Mr. Chairman, I've reviewed the consent agenda, and I find these items to be appropriate to be on the agenda. Therefore, I move for their approval.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? We need to go on the board for this. If you would, go on the board. Okay.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Hold on a second. Thank you, Paul.
Would you like me to repeat that?
No.
21 yes.
Thank you. There's one item on the consent agenda. It's item J six, and it's the budget calendar for next year. A couple of things probably need to be pointed out that you can go ahead and put on your calendar for next year. Tuesday, May the 24th, is the joint meeting, it looks like, of the Health and Ed and the Budget Committee. Tuesday, June the 14th, we're scheduled to have our public hearing on the proposed budget. And then on Monday, June the 27th, will be our annual Set the Property Tax Rate meeting. We have no unfinished business, and we are a little early for our public hearing, so we'll get right into our standing committee reports. Budget, finance, and investment. Commissioner P.
Maybe we can get one or two of these done. The first item is item M1A, and some changes to the general fund. The first one is actually one we voted on at our last meeting, but we forgot to put the amendment in there. So we're not perfect, but we're darn good. So we'll catch that. First is, this is human resources, a decreased uninsured fund balance for $24,925, and an increased expenditures for other contracted services for $24,925. Next is also general fund amendments for bonus pay, and they total, I'm not going to read all those, $174,470. Resolve this 16th day of December 2021. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. We'll be on the board for this, so if you would, please cast your vote.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I would like to rule 10, if I could, please.
So noted.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote, please.
19 yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to continue till you tell me it's time to stop. I thought we've got that hearing. Next item up is item M1B, and this is actually moving the funds for the bonuses from individual departments. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the Analyst Service Fund be amended as follows, and this is for what we call premium pay, increased expenditures of, well, let me just give you the total there, it'll be $13,399. Resolve this 16th day of December 2021. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Also be on the board for this, so please cast your vote.
20 yes.
Motion passes. Robert.
All right. The next item, M1C, is a resident, be it resolved that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the highway fund be amended as follows, and this is also for premium pay. Increased expenditures of, let's see, $5,686, also increased expenditures of $868, with a decrease of $1,024, and resolve this 16th day of December 2021. And again, this is to pay for the premium pay out of their accounts.
We have a motion and a second. We're also on the board for this. Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone that would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
21 yes.
Thank you. Robert, one more.
All right, we'll try it. Item M1D, resolution be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the Educational Capital Project Fund be amended according to the schedule attached heretofore as Exhibit One, and incorporated herein by reference, as if set forth herein at length verbatim, resolve this 16th day of December 2021. Mr. Chairman, I so move. And if you flip the page, you'll see that this is money to move 150,000 of the remainder of the Buchanan monies.
Also be on the board for this. Any questions or comments on that? We also be on the board for this, so if you would, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone that would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
21 yes.
Thank you. Robert.
Item M1E.
This recess. All right. 6:30, time for our public hearing. And we have one item for a public hearing tonight, and I'll call on our planning director, Doug Demossi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, everyone. Hope everyone's doing well tonight. As stated, we do have one request for you tonight. This is by Huddleston Steel for Randy Fritsum. This property is located at the corner of Lebanon Pike and Central Valley Road. It's currently zoned residential medium density, or RM. They are asking for a planned unit development for a mixed-use development. The size of the property is about 37 acres. Excuse me a second. Okay. The applicant is proposing to construct, as I stated, a mixed-use development on this property. In your agenda packets, on the staff comments, you'll see a breakdown of the different housing types and numbers. I won't go into all the different... of the different housing types and numbers. I won't go into all the different amounts, but there are plan to be two-bedroom townhomes, some three-bedroom townhomes, and also some detached single-family units, for a total of 126 residential units. All units will have driveways adequate for four parking spaces. The three-bedroom townhome units and single-family detached would also have two-car garages. All homes are to be a minimum of 75% brick, well, masonry product. Step system will be in the center under development, which will serve as their sanitary sewer. The applicant has also included amenity areas throughout the property. In addition to the residential area, they are also proposing about an acre and three-quarter, one and three-quarter acre, excuse me, commercial area at the intersection of Lebanon Pike and Central Valley Road. Their plan is for gas station, convenience market type use, but their pattern book does state that use is allowed within the commercial services zone generally, could be located on that property with some exceptions. So building materials would be, again, masonry with a combination of brick and stone with metal accents. This property will have access both to Central Valley Road and a right-in, right-out onto Lebanon Pike, as well as internal access into the development. I will also call your attention to the pattern book, which is on your iPads, for additional information, and we'd be happy answering questions if you have any on that. As stated, as far as the development's concerned, there will be two primary access points to the property. There's one along Central Valley Road, and there's also one along Lebanon Pike. The primary east-west and north-south roads through the development will be public. The roads within the townhome development closest to Central Valley Road will be private, however. And there's also stub streets both to the south that will allow, with the Irvin property, which was recently rezoned as a single-family development, and a stub street to the west to access potential future development. A traffic study was performed as part of this request. Turn lane improvements to the intersection of Lebanon Pike and Central Valley Road were recommended, as well as signalization of that intersection. There was some other discussion at the Planning Commission regarding a possible left-turn lane, westbound traffic along Central Valley Road into the development. The Planning Commission, during their deliberations, didn't feel necessary to put it in the pattern book, but did state that they were going to revisit that item whenever it came, if it's approved, for final plats and site plans. Buffering is generally not required between single-family developments, but they are proposing a type one buffer along the perimeter of this property, except for the rights-of-way of Central Valley Road and the portion of Lebanon Pike where it hits. There's also proposed evergreen buffer between the commercial area and the townhome units along Central Valley Road. Residential PUDs are required, excuse me, to set aside 10% open space, with half of that being usable. This application does meet those requirements, as well as the fact that with any planned development or development that we look at, really engineered site plans, plats would be required prior to development of any of these areas. Commercial areas would also have to show the landscaping access and everything on the site plan, and performance standards would also apply. The Planning Commission did have questions about parking in the streets. The applicant said they were willing to add verbiage in the pattern book and HOA documents that would prohibit this. That language has been added to the pattern book. There was also some questions about phasing. The applicant indicated they would add some of the townhome units closest to the single-family in Phase One. Again, that's also been added to the pattern book. I've already gone over the left-turn lane into the development, which will be revisited at a later time. Following that discussion, the Planning Commission did recommend approval by a unanimous vote, and I'll be happy to answer any questions, and the applicants are also present.
Yes, Mr. Demossi, so this did not come out of the Planning Commission with the requirement for turn lane?
No, just for the left-turn lane going into the development on Central Valley Road. The other requirements, as far as any improvements to the intersection of Central Valley Road and Lebanon Pike, those are included with that. That's correct.
With the traffic increase in Rutherford County and all the roads, I just cut through there the other day, I really don't see approving anything without turn lanes. Why do we want to have to go back and correct it later on when it becomes a real, real problem, which will probably be by the time this is built, when we can do it right now and require the developer to foot the bill on instead of the county?
Right. Well, and I will say, again, that this is not going to be the only bite at the apple for that one turn lane. Again, this is only for the left turn on Central Valley going into the development, not at the intersection. So we'll have another chance to look at this at the plating stages and also site plan. So we get multiple shots at that.
But when you do it at that point, it's not basically law. When we approve it here, it's basically, they're held to it, right?
Well, it'd be part of their pattern book, that's correct.
Right.
Other questions for Mr. Demossi?
I'm correct. I believe there's gonna be a traffic light also installed in this area, which will help the traffic flow.
That's correct.
And with that said, I would like to ask for the approval of this project not yet, and I digress.
Other questions for Mr. Demossi at this time? If not, we're ready for our public hearing. At this time, I'll declare a public hearing open for item REZ21-013, rezoning request for Huddleston Steel Engineering for Randy Fritsum. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request, please come forward. Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Now I'll call on our 14th District Commissioner, Virgil Gammon.
Well, what do you expect? I move for the approval of this project, and move it, because I've reviewed it, looked at it, and I know you have, along with the committee. But I think it's just, number one, to get a traffic light right there. I mean, you know, we've been looking, trying to even get a light. And so this will really help the citizens out there on top of that, and I think they've got a great plan.
The motion to approve is including Planning Commission staff comments? We have a motion to approve and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve this rezoning request, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you, Mr. Demossi.
Thank you, and Merry Christmas. Happy New Year, everybody.
Commissioner P.
I'm afraid these next three items may take a little longer than those first three, but that's because the resolutions are longer. The first one is some property that we're looking at purchasing. Item M1E, a resolution where is River Rock Baptist Church, FKA Victory Baptist Church, AKA Marshall Nob Baptist Church, the church on certain real property located at 3843 Highway 231 South, Shebbyville Highway, Murfreesboro, Tennessee 37127, tax map 136 parcel 049.00, as further depicted on the attached Exhibit A property. And where is said property is adjacent to other county property utilized for county purposes, and where is the church is offered to sell the property in any improvements thereon to the county for $80,000, in consideration for a general warranty deed conveying the property to the county, and where is the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners believes it is in the best interest of the county to purchase the property for $80,000. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and any other necessary officials of Rutherford County shall be, and the same hereby are authorized to execute an appropriate commercial purchase and sale agreement, and any other documents necessary to the purchase of the property for $80,000, plus closing costs, subject to review and approval by the county attorney, and proceed to the close and purchase of the property in consideration for a appropriate general warranty deed conveying the property to the county, subject to review and approval by the county attorney. Be it therefore resolved that the solid waste fund be amended as follows to appropriate funds to purchase the property and pay for any necessary closing cost. A decrease in assigned fund balance of $81,000, and an increase in expenditures for land for $81,000. Resolved this 16th day of December 2021. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
We have a motion and a second to approve item M1E. Any other discussion? For this will also be on the board, so please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now. Twenty-one, yes.
Motion carries.
Item M1F. And this has to do with our One Stop Building. Whereas funding for the architectural and engineering fees, construction and furniture and fixtures for the One Stop Building located at the northwest corner of Blaze Drive and Fortress Boulevard in Murfreesboro was approved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners in the amount of $5,300,000 in September of 2020. Whereas in January of 2021, the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners reduced the funding to $4,807,062, and authorized county mayor to enter into an agreement with the Public Building Authority of Rutherford County, the PBA, to oversee the design, construction, and furnishing of the One Stop Buildings. Whereas based on amount submitted by the architect, the total cost for all planning, design, architectural, and engineering services, construction, furniture, and fixtures, and information technology will be $6,363,060. And whereas additional funding of $1,555,998 will be needed to be derived from unallocated bond funds, and that's actually the money we had in, we took out. Also, the general fund sale of property revenue of $399,750 from the sale of property and general fund development of tax revenue of $663,310. And whereas the aforementioned agreement with the PBA will require an amendment to add the additional funding of $1,555,998. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that funding for all planning, design, architect, and engineering services, construction, furniture, and fixtures, and information technology for the One Stop Building be increased to $6,363,060, and that the general fund be amended as follows to transfer the additional funds to the county, to the general capital. And you'll see that at the bottom of the page there, from a decrease in restricted fund balance of $663,310, increase in revenue from sale of property, $399,750, and increase expenditures transferred to other funds of $1,63,060. Be it further resolved that the county mayor and any other necessary official of Rutherford County shall be, and the same hereby are authorized to execute an amended agreement with the PBA. A copy of the same being attached heretofu as Exhibit One, and incorporated herein by reference, as if set forth herein at length verbatim, to oversee the design, construction, and furnishing of the One Stop Building through completion. Resolved this 16th day of December 2021. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Johnson. Discussion? Will also be on the board for this, so please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone that would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
Twenty-one, yes.
Item M1F passes.
Okay, next up is item M1G, and this has to do with the funding for our public safety buildings resolution. Whereas the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners approved and entered into certain architectural and engineering agreements with Klein-Sweeney Associates dated December the 9th, 2020, Klein-Sweeney Agreement. And whereas funding for the architectural and engineering services to Klein-Sweeney Associates for the Rockvale and Ketchum Public Health and Safety Buildings was approved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners in November 2020. An additional funding for subcontracted engineering services was approved in August 2021 for design of four additional public health and safety buildings located in Walter Hill, Laskasses, Christiana, and Amerville. Whereas Rutherford County entered into an agreement with the Public Building Authority of Rutherford County, the PBA, for the design, construction, and furnishing of the Rockvale Public Health and Safety Buildings in September 2021. And whereas funding up to $28,201,294 is available from the American Rescue Plan, the ARPA, for the planning, design, architectural, and engineering services, construction, furniture, and fixtures, and information technology for the Rockvale, Ketchum, Walter Hill, and Laskasses Public Health and Safety Buildings. And whereas the aforementioned agreement with the PBA will require an amendment to the additional funding up to and not to exceed $28,201,294. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that all planning, design, architectural, and engineering services, construction, furniture, fixtures, and information technology for the Rockvale, Ketchum, Walter Hill, and Laskasses Public Health and Safety Buildings be funded up to amount not to exceed $28,201,294 from the ARPA funds. Be it further resolved that the special revenue fund be amended as follows to release previous encumbered on the ARPA funds that were not needed and recognize these ARPA revenue and appropriate, and appropriate the funds for the project. If you look on that next page, you'll see all those monies listed, and that's actually part of the premium pay. But that totals $280,015. Also, we have an increase in revenue of the ARPA funds for $28,280,799. Architects, $399,918. Building construction, $25,583,492. Data processing equipment, $2,102,103,232. Furniture and fixtures, $114,652. Building purchase, and this is actually a decrease of $100,000, and also for building construction, a decrease of $50,000. Those were monies that were pulled back after we no longer needed them for the State Farm building. And finally, restricted fund balance, $229,505. Be it further resolved that the county mayor and any other necessary official of Rutherford County shall be, and the same hereby are authorized to execute an amended agreement with the PBA. A copy of the same being attached heretofu as Exhibit One, and incorporated herein by reference, as if set forth herein at length verbatim, to oversee the design, construction, and furnishing of the Rockvale, Ketchum, Walter Hill, and Laskasses Public Health and Safety Buildings through completion, and further that the Klein-Sweeney Agreement be assigned to the PBA. Resolved this 16th day of December 2021. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
We have a motion and a second to approve M1G. Other discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
In reading the minutes of the Budget Committee, there was some discussion about removing the tornado-proofness of this buildings. The events of December 10 and 11 should kind of put that to rest. I watched the fire chief very emotionally of Mayfield, Kentucky, a little town that I once lived in, where my son was born in. The hospital where he was born is no longer. A lot of the town is no longer, so we should keep them in our prayers. But what he said is, we had to extricate ourselves and our equipment from our building before we could respond to the candle factory. So, yes, I realize it's gonna cost some additional funds, but we need to make sure, just remember, that if our public safety people are killed or buried, they can't respond. just remember that if our public safety people are killed or buried, they can't respond in an event like this. So while it might seem that that's a good thing, and we may never have a tornado, but 2009 kind of, you know, that was a pretty good one, hit the city of Murfreesboro. So I really think that if anyone's doubting about the wisdom of including that feature in these buildings, that should, the events of December 10 and 11 should put their mind at rest that this is the right thing to do.
Just to be clear, the plans remain the same, so it is included.
I'm not sure we had a second. Did we have a second?
Yes.
Okay. We had a motion and a second to approve M1G. Any other questions or comments? Will also be on the board for this, so please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
Twenty-one yes.
Mr. Chairman, item H, I'd like to request that we remove that from the agenda since we just voted on that item, so we double those up. So that just completes our agenda.
Very good. Item M1G carried unanimously, and item H has been removed because it was included in the prior one. Very good. M2, getting our committee reports. M2 is Health and Ed. Chairman Rhonda Allen.
Yes, I just want to announce that the December meeting has been canceled. Our next meeting will be on January the 25th.
Very good. Thank you. M3, Property Management. Chairman Allen McAdoo.
Our next scheduled meeting will be December 22 at 5:30 PM.
Thank you, Allen. Item 4, Public Safety. Pettis Reed, Chairman Pettis Reed.
Our next meeting will be this coming Monday at 5:30. You will notice that that meeting has been moved up a week because of Christmas.
Thank you. Item number 5, Public Works and Planning. Chairman Mike Kush.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The New Year's holiday did not impact the Public Works and Planning scheduled meeting that will be January 4th, Tuesday, January 4th.
Thank you. Item 6, Steering Legislative and Governmental Committee.
Gentlemen, we have a resolution on, this is concerning the opioid settlement, and the state has asked us for a resolution on it. When I first became a commissioner, I had met with Attorney Byrd on this, and I felt that it was to the best of Rutherford County to go with this alone and for us to be able to get the funds to do with it what we want to do. I'm not going to sit up here and say that I was, you know, a lot of people are happy with this. I personally thought that it kind of went against what we wanted to do from the beginning. And the reason I say that is, the good part about it is about 2.4 million of the 9.2 million, and Commissioner Stephen, that is without attorney fees. So this has got no attorney fees. This is the money that's coming. It's 9.2 million total. Unrestricted funds total about 2.4 million, so that will be unrestricted, which means we can do what the county wants to do with that. The other is an abatement, which is two-thirds of the settlement, which is where I was not necessarily happy about, but after looking at all the things that they want to do, it does fit in to what's best for Rutherford County. Just some of the things that I've always said, people always see me talk about opioid, but they, you know, they constantly, well, what do you want us to do? You know, what do you want, what is it that you're asking us to do? And I feel that the biggest way for us to combat this is three ways, and this is my way, and it's awareness, education, and recovery. And those are the ways that I think that we can, going forward, as Rutherford County can address this problem, which is starting to get worse. With the state and with what they said that we can do, they will provide funding for media campaigns, which is awareness, provide education to school-based and youth-focused programs, education, provide education, awareness, training, and programs to all of our employees, and provide treatment and recovery support services. So those are things that fall in that, which I think is a good thing for the county. Is there any questions? If not, I'll read the resolution. Whereas the opioid epidemic continues to impact communities in the United States, the state of Tennessee, and Rutherford County, Tennessee. Whereas Rutherford County has suffered harm and will continue to suffer harm as a result of the opioid epidemic. Whereas the state of Tennessee and some Tennessee local governments have filed lawsuits against opioid manufacturers, distributors, and retailers, including many federal lawsuits by Tennessee counties and cities that are pending in the litigation, championed in the national prescription opioid litigation. The MDL case is referred to as opioid litigation. Whereas certain pharmaceutical distributors and a manufacturer have proposed settlements that Rutherford County find acceptable and in the best interest of the community. Whereas the Tennessee legislation enacted Public Chapter Number 491 during the 2021 regular session of the 112 Tennessee General Assembly and was signed into law by Governor Bill Lee on May 24, 2021, which addresses the allocation of funds for certain proposed opioid litigation settlements. Whereas the state of Tennessee, non-litigating counties, and representatives of various local governments involved in the opioid litigation have proposed a unified plan for the allocation and use of certain prospective settlement and bankruptcy funds from opioid-related litigation. Whereas the Tennessee State Subdivision Opioid Abatement Agreement attached and set forth a framework of a unified plan for the proposed allocation and use of the settlement funds. Whereas participation in the settlements in Tennessee plan by a large majority of Tennessee cities and counties will materially increase the amount of settlement funds that Tennessee will receive from pending proposed opioid settlements. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners as follows, that Rutherford County finds that participation in the Tennessee plan is in the best interest of Rutherford County and its citizens because such a plan will ensure an effective structure for the commitment of settlement funds to abate and seek to resolve the opioid epidemic. That Section 2, that Rutherford County hereby expresses its support for a unified plan for all allocation and use of settlement funds as generally described in the Tennessee plan. Section 3, that the Rutherford County Mayor is hereby expressly authorized to execute the Tennessee plan in substantially, in substantially the form attached as Exhibit A, and the county mayor is hereby authorized to execute any formal agreements necessary to implement a unified plan for the allocation and use of settlement funds that is substantially consistent with the Tennessee plan and this resolution. Section 4, that the Rutherford County Mayor is hereby expressly authorized to execute any formal agreements and related documents evidencing Rutherford County agreement to the settlement of claims and litigation specifically related to AmerisourceBergen Corporation, Cardinal Health Incorporated, McKeeson Corporation, Genesis Pharmaceuticals, and Johnson &amp; Johnson. Section 5, that the Rutherford County Mayor is authorized to take such action as necessary and appropriate to officiate Rutherford County participation in the Tennessee plan and these settlements. Section 6, the resolution is effective upon adoption, the welfare of the Rutherford County, Tennessee required it. Resolve this day in December. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
We have a motion and a second to approve item M6. Any other discussion? Mr. Gooch.
Mayor, thank you. The company I work for owns about 30% of AmerisourceBergen, so I'm just going to abstain from this vote.
So noted. Mr. Kush.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chairman Harris, on Steering Committee, we discussed this when you introduced this information to us. And as I recall, this first sum of sums of money, the 2.4 million, is the first of a settlement, correct?
No, what it is, is the total, the total settlement is 9.2 million.
Right.
2.4 million is unrestricted, which is totally controlled by Rutherford County.
Okay, and then 70% of the next settlement has to be...
Is through abatement.
Okay. Is there potentially more funding coming through additional lawsuit finalization?
Yes, we have, we have more lawsuits with bigger companies, so this is just a start.
So this is just the beginning?
Yes.
All right. So help me also then determine, it says that the, the resolution says that the mayor has the power, right? But is there going to be a committee, or who is going to determine that the monies are properly allocated to your awareness, education, and treatment goals?
Well, this resolution, this is based on what they had as far as coming from the state. I advise the mayor that this committee, this commission should be in control as far as, you know, yes, we're working with him, but I want to form a committee that is able to work together and to give these monies out. So that's, that's what I tell the mayor, I mean, that I'm wanting to do, and I hope I get y'all's support, because I think this commission needs to have a big hand in what goes on in these funds.
Question. Commissioner Gurley.
The tobacco settlement funds are, go through the Health Department, which we look at somewhat at Health and Ed meetings. This is, so I think we need to think long and hard about the, where this is more, it's a multifaceted thing, but, you know, it involves law enforcement, involves health. I really think in spending these funds, you know, we've gone through this with the tobacco funds, with tobacco, people are going to seek, when people hurt, they're going to seek a source of relief. That may be opioids, that may be alcohol, that may be a number of substances. But it gets back to, in many of the instances, it gets back to the trauma that those people have dealt with in their lives. And until we get down to the root cause of the problem that people, why do people seek to relieve their pain? Why do they turn to these substances? Until we get down to that root cause, we're not going to ever solve the problem. We can throw mega bucks at it, but we won't solve it. But we may be able to, kind of, you know, like putting some water on a big fire, a little bit of water on a big fire, we may be able to slow it down, but we're not going to get to the, we're not going to solve the problem. And that's true with whatever substance, because like I said, people are seeking a substance, they're seeking some relief through some kind of action or substance abuse. So I think we need to think long and hard how we spend these funds and how it goes. Maybe it needs a special committee, maybe it needs to go through, I don't really know, but I just want to throw that out there. Thank you.
Well, I'll try to answer your question the best I can. I've been dealing this for three years. I have talked about it, all y'all know me, I seem to be the face of it, and I haven't done a very good job. I have tried hard to bring awareness for this, I have tried to, you know, deaths are going up 20% every year, they're going to go up another 20%. However, our overdoses went down almost 200 a year, which is big. So we went from 850 overdoses a year to 650. Now that could be because of Narcan campaign and given Narcan out, that's probably one of the reasons that it is, which is kind of, in my idea, misleading because there's still overdoses. It's just people are just able to bring themselves out of it. Commissioner Gurley, I'll never quit. I'm not going to quit, and if I lose reelection, so be it. I'll continue to be part of this, I'll continue to fight for this, and you're going to see a video that's coming out that we made, the Rutherford County, which is, it's going to explain to you, it's going to show you who I am, and it's going to show you who the people are that is in this county that are struggling with it right now. Because my biggest focus has always been to show you the ugly without pain. That's what I've been trying to do, is show you the ugliness of this without pain. Because with pain, there's nothing in your life that's ever happened to you physically that can come close to explaining to you how much that pain is. And this is one of the things that I have campaigned on, I ran on, and I'll continue to run on it as well. This is a start. This is a chance for us to do some things and just gives us money. And I think that this commission is more than able enough to put together a committee and to allocate these funds. And that the mayor, new mayor, whoever, that we always will be able to have a say in these funds. And I think every one of y'all do. I think every one of y'all will do that. So I think I'm, I'm passionate about it, y'all know that. You know that I think this is a good thing. It's a start. It's 9.2 million, and there's things we can do with it. Any other questions?
Mr. Allen.
Yeah, I just had one suggestion I wanted to make, sort of a follow-up to Commissioner Gurley. This settlement is different from the tobacco. We've referenced the tobacco several times, and this is different in that there's definitely the public safety factor that needs to be worked into it. But I would suggest that as we form a committee, that we keep our Health Department heavily involved, because part of the settlement is going to come to the state level. And if the allocation in those funds plays out the same way it did with tobacco, we were so successful at our local Health Department and the programs that we were implementing that for other communities who had to forfeit their money because they weren't, we got additional grants because we were so effective. So I think keeping the Health Department plugged in through all this could even potentially increase the amount that we would have to spend.
Yeah, and I think that's where Chairman of Health and Ed comes in. I mean, absolutely. I mean, our Health Department is, Health Department is just, you know, for the school programs that we got put in the curriculum. Health Department was huge in that. I mean, they were big, they got the money, they're the ones that got the funding for that. So I so agree.
I had one more thing I was going to say. This is not a commercial for Hulu, but if you have Hulu, there is a program, I think it's an eight-episode program called Dope Sick, and Michael Keaton, I believe, stars in it. I watched it, and it's based on a true story, and it's terrifying. I mean, I was, always knew the seriousness of it. I had sons who had knee surgery, doctors always, you know, cautioned you about that. My husband had some surgeries, they always caution you about, you know, the addiction. But watching that episode, or watching that series as it went through, it's terrifying. It really is genuinely terrifying. And I think it's very accurately portrayed, and it sort of shows you the beginning of it to how we got here to this settlement. So anyway, that's my Hulu commercial I did, but Dope Sick, it's a really good, good program.
Well, one of the things that people don't understand is like, we start off with pills, we'll say pills, and we can go to any pharmacy, and if we have a script in our name, $7.50 for a bottle of 30, you know, somewhere around that. Well, on the street, or tabs, go for $20 and $30 a pill. And then Opas, which is a very highly addictive pill, goes for 100. Well, these kids can't, can't afford it, or, you know, certain people can't afford it, and next thing you know, they do heroin. And then we got fentanyl. So fentanyl is the one that's probably scares me more than anything in the world, because now they're starting to mix it with marijuana. And these things right here is so deadly, I mean, just a little bit of it can cause you to overdose. So, yeah, we have a long ways to go. And one of the things too, that, and I'll try to keep this, you know, short, our Sheriff's Department made a bust, and they confiscated not only guns, but they confiscated 12 pounds of heroin and 14 pounds of fentanyl. And I'm paraphrasing, I might be off a pound there. That's enough to kill 2.3 million people. 2.3 million, that's what that, that killed, and it was in Rutherford County. They made the arrest here. So some of the reasons that our deaths are down a little... So some of the reasons that our deaths are down a little bit is because they ain't got a new guy coming in yet. So that's why I think this is a start. We got a long ways to go, but we're doing something.
Thank you.
Steering Committee's next meeting will be January the 10th.
Any other questions or comments? We have a motion and a second to approve item M6, the Opioid Abatement Agreement Resolution. Any other questions? Any other comments? We'll go on to board for this, if you don't mind. So if you would, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
19 yes, one abstain.
Thank you. Item M6 carries. Thank you. It brings us to the end of our agenda under other business. I'll remind everyone that this is our last meeting for this fiscal year, and our next full commission meeting is Thursday, January the 13th, 2022. And also remind everyone that January is the month that you need to file your ethics statement by the end of January, so put that on your calendar, don't forget that. On behalf of the staff of Rutherford County Government, I'd like to thank you for your participation this year, your willingness to work together. Although we might not agree on everything, we do agree that what we do is in the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County, and we'll carry that forward into 2022. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everyone. Anyone have any other announcements? Robert. Commissioner P., I'm sorry.
Oh, that's fine. I enjoy being called Robert, been called a lot worse in my life. First of all, I want to ask Lisa, are we meeting on the 6th, or are we going to jump down after Steering and Public Works meet, January? You know, we should still be open on the 6th, but, you know, that's a county holiday on the 3rd. I just wanted to be clear. Well, I looked at it, and I didn't, oh, I see what you're talking about. By the way, I want to thank Ms. Cook while she's opening her calendar, she always provides us with a nice calendar every year.
Yeah, we should be meeting on --
So we'll meet our normal day on the 6th. Now, I've got some bad news that I wanted to say, and that, but, and then again, it's good news, you people on budget have already heard this, but our finance director has announced her retirement. For those of you that hadn't heard, we will be doing extensive searches. She's ensured me she will stay with us until we've got somebody with their feet under them. She said she doesn't want to go through another budget, so we want to try to move it up from there. But she's assured me if that's what it takes, that's what it takes you to do that. Anyway, I want to congratulate Lisa on her pending retirement.
Commissioner Reed.
I wouldn't even attempt to touch that. I do want to announce something as far as an upcoming event, January the 8th, if some of you are available that evening, that's a Saturday night. Out in my neighborhood, there used to be quite a rivalry between the two schools of Rockville and Iggleville. But when we had consolidation, that sort of took care of that situation. But 50 years ago, the last basketball game was held by those two schools. Both the boys' and the girls' team played each other 50 years ago. Well, on January the 8th, there's going to be a recurrence of that situation. They're going to play each other again at Rockville High School. And this was put together by the two schools agreeing to it that the gate receipts will be divided among the two schools for purposes there within the school. Neither are in each other's region, so that will not involve in it. But it's just going to be a fun event. They're talking to all the former players from 50 years ago or beyond will be coming out that night, so we get an opportunity to have somewhat of a reunion. So any of you that are available that night, if you want to go back and you see some of the, some across the floor hollering at each other and all this sort of thing, you might get that opportunity. We don't know how that will come out. The thing that it does, though, it takes a county commissioner who has both of those schools within his district. And he is a former Rockville Rocket, so which one does he holler for that night? So it puts him somewhat in a, between a rock and a hard place. But I did want to announce that it starts at 6 o'clock that evening. I think Coach Tease is even going to have a little place set up there at the school and that sort of thing. So we invite all of you to come back out to the veil and to see that situation going on right there. We promise there won't be any fights, and we just promise it's going to be a fun time and opportunity to come out there. So come on out.
Commissioner Gammon.
At least they don't play donkey basketball anymore, so, been there, done that. I feel like I need to just, I want to wish everybody Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. But my family's been through some stuff this past week. Mr. Gurley brought up the 10th and 11th, my daughter in Bowling Green's house got tore up, demolished, you know, total loss. She's doing well with my granddaughters and people, so luckily, thank God, nobody got hurt. And, but, I got a call at 4 o'clock in the morning. And, you know, it's just nothing you can do. You couldn't even get near the place. So, you know, it's pretty terrible. But, you know, the happiness of that is, is a lot of people were in a lot worse shape and came out of it in a lot worse situation. And then a few days later, I get a call, my grandson, Britton, was transported to Vanderbilt Children's Hospital with RSV. But I gotta say, Jonathan Rittenberg and his team, the ambulance team, I didn't know everybody, but I called the mayor, and I called the ambulance director, and I said, "I want to thank you for the professional, you know, job that they did in getting my grandson down there." And I'm just very thankful.
Thank you. Commissioner Gammon. Anything else?
Chairman.
Sorry. Michael. Commissioner Rather.
Call me Michael, it doesn't matter. We're all going through something, everybody. Everybody is. And this world is at odds with one another. And Chairman Harris talks about the opioid epidemic, which I'm very familiar with. We've got to be a praying people. And if you're not, learn. But we have got to pray for one another. I don't care how fat you are, skinny you are, what color you are, your emotional status, intellect, we're all people, and we've got to pray for each other. You know, I hear Chairman Harris talk about the opioids and Commissioner Gammon talk about his grandson, his daughter, we're all going through something. And I see a lot of heads shaking. There's a teacher, this is where I'm going with it, I wanted to call Commissioner Goach, Chaplain Goach, earlier this week, then I saw the agenda, and I didn't want to take anything away from Central Magnet's celebration, which really should be celebrated. But there's a teacher that we have in this county, teaches at Cedar Grove Elementary. He has two daughters, honor students, brilliant, brilliant girls at Central Magnet. He has an older daughter that is a freshman in college, went to Central Magnet. She was in a car accident probably three, four weeks ago. The first report we had was they had removed half of her skull, and she either would not live, best case was she'd never be the same again. She wouldn't respond. You know what she's doing now? She's smiling, and her dad says, "Show me 1, 2, 3, 4, 5," and she shows 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. She's responding. And there's a reason. There have been teachers, friends, neighbors, everybody they know have been praying and praying and praying. And this girl, it's a miracle. And last night, I watched, I've seen this movie two, three times, and I cried all the way through. It's called Breakthrough, if anybody's ever seen it. If you hadn't, look it up and watch it, get some Kleenex. Prayer works. It works. It works every time. So my statement or my request is, this girl's name is Lindley. Her dad's name is Philip. He's a teacher in our school system. For those of you that pray, pray for Lindley and that family. If you don't pray, pray anyway. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Rather. Anyone else? Once again, thank you for being here and your participation this evening. And again, Merry Christmas. We are adjourned.